Forty-five, we will begin on time. This is Plenary Two's call to worship. In religion, Jesus advocated and followed the method of experience, even as modern science pursues the technique of experiment. We find God through the leadings of spiritual insight. But we approach the insight of the soul through the love of the beautiful, the pursuit of truth, loyalty to duty, and the worship of divine goodness. Of all these values, love is the true guide to real insight.
As you bow your heads in humility, I want you to remember that you are always in the presence of the Father. So I offer this as a prayer with that humility, respect, and love. Father, we thank you and all of our unseen friends for bringing these many unique and diverse personalities together here in this Urantia community, creating this our first universal classroom, learning cooperation with many others. We ask, Father, that you keep us mindful in our daily lives that every person we encounter is another face of God, that each time we look into another's eyes, we see you. And, Father, help us to separate a person's behavior from who they really are so that we may love them more lavishly. Thank you.
Be thou my vision, O Lord of my heart; not be all else to me save that thou art. Thou mine days' thought in the day and the night, waking or sleeping, thy presence my light. Riches I need not, no man's empty prince; thou mine inheritance, all I tis; thou and thou only first in my heart. Great God of heaven, my treasure thou art. Please, all of you, join us on this last verse.
For this next song, folks, this may be a familiar melody. And for those of you who recognize it and would like to sing along, please join in.
Oh, my love, my Father, I've hungered for your touch, your truth so divine. Time goes by, yet each day I grow closer to you. You live in my soul. I need your love. I need your love. God speak your love to me. The river flows to the sea, to the sea; all things flow to you in due time. I've met with the faith of a child; I'll devote to you all that's mine. Now, through time eternal, my faith will overcome each challenge I find. As I grow in spirit, your peace I find within your love so sublime. Now all life is new, now all life is so new; I've been given new eyes to see, a new mind to think, a new heart to feel, to bring me ever closer to Thee. Oh, my love, my Father, I've hungered for your touch, your truth so divine. Time goes by, yet each day I grow closer to you. You live in my You live in my soul. Oh, hear my prayer. Please hear my prayer. My soul sweet prayer to you. Oh, hear my prayer. Please hear my prayer. My soul sweet prayer to you. Good job, y'all. Thank you. We're gonna do a song that came out of the bluegrass idiom originally called Carpenter of Wood. Up on the floor of a humble carpenter shop, A boy played among the woodchips there. Learning his father's trade to build out of wood. Living each day by the rule. It's not a carpenter made of wood. It's not a sailor made of water. It's the best you've done, always the best you could. It's not a son made of his father. This boy walked along the sea and he became a man. And he talked to the sailors by the sea. This man calmed the waters with the way of his hand. And he calmed the people that he did meet. It's not a carpenter made of wood. It's not a sailor made of water. It's the best you've done, always the best you could. It's not a son made of his father. This man suffered pain and ridicule for using his powers. Still he continued no matter the cost. Forsaken by the people who he prayed forgiveness for. As he cried to his father from the cross. It's not a carpenter made of wood. It's not a sailor made of water. It's the best you've done, always the best you could. It's not a son made of his father. Thank you for light and love, our Father. This is a song written by a man named Bobby. It's called "One Beautiful Day." If we believe that we can make a new beginning. If we are sure that we can walk the path of love. If we should truly go and make this life worth living. Then we must look within as well as up above. One beautiful day, we will awaken. To find that we all have shared the same dream. Then we shall rise in celebration. Eager to see what we have seen. When we have loosened up heavy chains to bind us. When we can see beyond the hatred and strife. When we can celebrate the differences among us. Then we should truly know the beauty of this life. One beautiful day, we will awaken. To find that we all have shared the same dream. Then we shall rise in celebration. Eager to see what we have seen. Eager to see what we have seen. Well, as we give thanks for the angels among us, Here's a song that references to that called "Unseen Hands." When you were young, did you get crazy? When you were young, did you get wild? Did you drink and smoke yourself real easy? Trying to find the enchanted island. Were there nights when the fear, like a boulder fell? You'd gone too far and prayed to God, you lived a tale to tell. Did unseen hands lift the boulder? Did unseen hands lift a heavy heart? Did unseen hands hold your shoulders? Bear you up to the higher ground? Some we love have crossed over. We loved them trueer than the new we did. But if there's grace in their passing. Is that they showed us how to live? There are nights when the grief, like a boulder falls. Tears they roll and it feels like I'm gonna drown. But unseen hands lift the boulder. Did unseen hands lift a heavy heart? Unseen hands hold your shoulders? Bear you up to the higher ground? Well, there are times when I do stumble. There are times when I do fall. There are mornings when I won't. Have I got this bumper in a... There are nights when I turn like a boulder falls. Wonder if happiness is gonna hang around here at all. But unseen hands lift the boulder. Did unseen hands lift a heavy heart? Unseen hands hold your shoulders? Bear you up to the higher ground? Yes, unseen hands lift your shoulders? Bear you up to the higher ground? All right, Les, we got time for just one more. And it's a sing-along, and we need the whole band. It's a sing-along, sort of. The first verse is the chorus. And we hope everybody who wants to sing sings a bit with us. We're gonna do, uh... Michael rode the boat ashore. Let all these amazing musicians take a little lick on it. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. The river Jordan's deep and wide, hallelujah. Me brother Jesus on the other side, hallelujah. So Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Well, sister, help the trimmers say, hallelujah. Sister, help the trimmers say, hallelujah. So Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Yeah. Where the river Jordan's deep and cold, hallelujah. Chills the body and not the soul, hallelujah. So Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Well, this old boat's a music boat, hallelujah. If you don't sing, it won't float, hallelujah. So Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. More time on everybody. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. Michael rode the boat ashore, hallelujah. That's all for us. We're outta time. Good afternoon. Thank you to our talented musicians. If I'm not mistaken, they are going to be back tomorrow afternoon, too, right? Oh, wow. See, so there's tonight, there's tomorrow. You're gonna hear more of them, which is awesome. And we'll go over the schedule for this evening at the end of the talk now. Before I forget, I forgot to mention that I promised Andrea I would. If you liked her presentation, come to her workshop on...
If you liked her presentation, come to her workshop on Friday. She's gonna continue on the same theme and do a little more practical application of that theme, which I know you'll be interested in attending. So, our next two speakers, it's a pair, so you get twice the money. Don't worry, we didn't raise the price because of that. Two really, when you say faithful servants of the revelation, you really couldn't find two better examples. Both Thomas and Paula, both in their local communities, their areas, and even the nation, and even the world, have really dedicated themselves to outreach, to ministry, to popularizing, to getting the word out in so many different ways. You can't even list all these things in one Google search, at least I found out, all the stuff that's out there on the internet. And I think they both have a way of making things accessible and entertaining and fun, and that's what they've promised to do this afternoon. And I'm sure they are not going to disappoint us. So Paula and Thomas, come on up. I'm sorry, I forgot the most important part. Come on up, though. All right. Paula's favorite songs, "In Your Eyes," Peter Gabriel. Classic, you know, very good. Thomas gave us "Love God and Love People," which I think is by a guy named Danny Gokee. Is that right? Maybe there's different versions.
It's a brand-new version.
Oh, a new version, okay.
A few months old.
Oh, great. Well, look that up. And I still, I wanna circulate a list of these songs 'cause I'm sure they're very meaningful and good. Thomas's favorite genre of music is praise and worship, so that's great. Paula's a rocker, so, you know, watch out.
Every love song is for Jesus. Every single one. "In Your Eyes." I feel the light, the heat. I am complete in your eyes. That's to the master, right? Has to be. Okay. Will do. This better? Yeah, okay. Yay. We decided to do this extemporaneously, for the most part, so bear with us.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, we had lots of conversations. I got to know this dear sister well over the course of many... Over the course of many opportunities to explore, you know, our faith and how we might present this. And we did decide against just writing it out because there was just too much to say, and we wanted to say it directly from the heart. And we both asked the Spirit to basically help us with this part. So first, thank you all for being here. And when I say "all," I mean all. Not just those that we see, but our unseen friends. Revelation tells us that there's an assembly here of angels, of midwares, more than we probably know. And so what I would like to say to them, thank you for coming, all of you who are here. Absolutely. We are blessed, obviously, to have so many heavenly helpers to serve us as persons and through the planet. So thank you, and we are all faith daughters and sons of God. That's, we are family. Those that are here, thank you to know and to know that we will be together for an eternity, and we have this great work ahead of us to serve our Father in heaven. So thank you all that are here. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Tom. And I wanna say, my heart is so full right now. Music fills my heart, anyway, but being with all of you fills my heart. So Tom did a tribute and an acknowledgement of the unseen, our unseen friends. I wanna do an acknowledgement of you, our seen friends, our precious seen friends. That you, I know you well. I feel so privileged to know you well, and I love you well. Thank you. Thank you for being so spiritually hungry in your spiritual journey, that you were led to this great revelation. How precious and amazing is that? You represent a tiny little drop in the ocean of humanity that found this beautiful revelation, internalized it, taken it into your hearts, and are here to celebrate it with all of us. I love you. Thank you for being dedicated, wonderful, hungry, amazing human beings. You take my breath away. Thank you. I know. I love you. You guys are the best. Aw, gee. Oh, Pasha.
So our theme is "Meet Me At The Water," but help us see, help us to see God, help us to see His presence. So, Lord, help us to see the paths to healing through Your ministering spirits to us, and that when we see You and we are healed and we are invigorated, that we not just heal ourselves, but we heal others as we pass by or as we enter into their lives. Help us to see that each day is ripe with opportunities to spread Your love, Your caring, Your kindness, Your compassion, a helping hand to people wherever you meet. Grocery store, parking lots, fast food places. Leave people better off for having met you that day, that hour. Make that one of your goals, your promises to yourself and to God. I will leave them better off for having met me this day, this hour. Help us to see that we can find courage. Courage to be overcomers. All of us here have, no doubt, overcome great obstacles in our life, great difficulties. That where we've stumbled, where we've maybe been knocked down, people have doubted us, degraded us, demeaned us, and yet we know with His Spirit in us, we are overcomers. We can't be defeated. Because He can't be defeated, we will not be defeated because we hold on to Him. We do not let go of that Spirit inside. That's our promise to Him, and His promise to us, that there'll be no defeat, there'll be an eternal life. What a great message, you know? Help us to see that when we find the courage to be, I'm sorry, to the beauty in the hearts of others. Help us to have, to see each of us and that inner beauty, but inner longing, inner kindness, and that we look not just in the past, not just in the present, but we look to that individual in the future. And we look at them in time. And we see ourselves as someone who can invest in somebody in the future. I was a classroom teacher 30 years. I still teach. And I would pray for the class before they'd walk in the door. I'd get on my knees sometimes and just, "Lord, I just really want it. This is gonna be a tough one. I know this group of kids are very challenging." I taught middle school and high school. And I had to get on my knees in order to be the best for them. And it worked. It does work to be on your knees before kids come in. I'm proof positive. And help us to see that we're always at home in His presence. We're never lost, we're never away. Wherever we are with Him, we are home. In His presence, it just feels warm and safe to be with Him. That our faith is not just a lifeline, it's a stairway to heaven. And we've been promised that, right? Our faith will get us to the mansion worlds and beyond, and beyond, and beyond, and beyond. It's just a great plan. I'm stunned all the time how beautiful it is.
How perfect. It's so perfect. You know, Tom, I have a simple motto in life. You wanna change the future, you wanna change the world, be important in the life of a child. That's all you have to do. You wanna change the world, be important in the life of a child. And you've been important in the lives of many children. So thank you for your service to our children. And all of you teachers out there, thank you, thank you, thank you. What a selfless, beautiful life occupation that is to be a teacher. So Steve, go ahead and advance the first slide. You know, one of the issues that we had with this is, one of the first things the book tells us is, we can't see God. Right? It calls Him the unseen Father. The temple in the garden is to the unseen Father. And so that creates a bit of a dilemma, to see You more clearly. See You, Father, more clearly. Because we can't see You in this life. We won't see You, not with our physical eyes, we won't see You. So, "The spiritual luminosity of the Father's personal presence is a light which no mortal man can approach, which no material creature has seen or can see. But it is not necessary to see God with the eyes of the flesh in order to discern Him by the faith vision of the spiritualized mind." Every revelation had a material counterpart to go with it. Every revelation was designed to help us see God. We're supposed to have our visible government on this planet, our government that is visible to us as representatives of the universe government. We're supposed to have that. We don't have that. So we're called to be agendonters. We did have Jesus, and He makes Father visible to us. But, so that's the dilemma. How can we learn to see God more clearly with the faith vision of the spiritualized mind? Which reminds me, Tom, of something you told me in our many talks, and we've had this chance to get to know each other. We've had these wonderful phone conversations that have just been sublime. And He told me, He gave me an insight about what it was like to be a brand-new Father. You wanna share that story?
Sure. It's always a good time. I thought I'd had the book, and so I thought I was prepared. I mean, I thought I was gonna be a good father. I thought about it, but, you know, I think most parents go into the thing, "I can do this. I can do a good job." And when our first son was born, and that boy laid on my chest, I was stunned. I was overwhelmed by the amount of love that I had for that child. I didn't prepare for that much. I didn't see that love coming. I'm convinced that it's a gift. It's a bestowal, that our Father doesn't wait to introduce Himself to us until the time that some adultist told Him about God or introduced Him to Jesus. He introduces Himself the moment we're born. The instant that loving parent begins to bond with that child and looks into their face, He is introducing the love of Him through the parent. I mean, it's a parent-child relationship. And it was such a beautiful thing. And it gave me just the courage and energy and the wherewithal to continue to be a parent, a dad of two sons who are doing quite well. But it just occurred to me, He just doesn't wait for somebody to speak the words to someone. He introduces it in the love of the parent who's looking there. You've seen small children look at their parents and that love bond that happens right away. That's not a natural thing. That's a spiritual thing. And the Father introducing Himself to his children the moment we're born. It would be just like him, anyway.
I love that. That was such a keen insight to me. And I think about government on a neighboring planet, right? Where the spiritual education is exclusively the job of the parents. They don't do it in any other way. That, to me, that speaks to that, why that is true. The parent is the most natural explanation of God's love. And I've often told people that, you know, two things in my life have changed me more than anything. One was the birth of my children, and the other was finding the Orangutan Book. And why did those two experiences change me more than anything? Because they both taught me about the love of God. Nothing I have ever found in my life, or done in my life, has taught me more about the love of God than being a parent and finding the Orangutan Book. So that's pretty remarkable, that you could hold the Orangutan Book next to being a parent, I find. And if you're thinking about being a parent, young people out there, wherever you may be, I highly recommend it. I highly recommend it. If you're inclined to do it at all, do it, because it is a gift. It's not only a gift to this world, it's a gift to God, it's a gift to eternity, it's a gift to you. It's just a gift in every way parenthood is. And it keeps on giving, doesn't it? It's so sublime.
With that said, I was introduced to Jesus with words. My mother was raised by nuns. Her mother couldn't or wouldn't take care of her. She was a party girl, and she just didn't wanna take care of this child. So when she was a young teenager, she sent her to a Catholic boarding school where she spent her young years. And it really did change her. And it saved her in so many ways. And when I was about three, I mean, Paula and I have been talking about this, and I talked to my mom, this was about the age. We were, my sister and I, we're just a year apart. We were sitting on this beautiful chaise lounge underneath a cherry tree blossoming, pink petals falling down, with the sun shining through. And she told me about Jesus. She told me how He loved children, how He healed people, what an incredible person He was. She went on to explain the character of Christ to me as literally a child. And I remember to this day the experience that I had, the feeling that I had, that I thought, "I wanna follow Him. I wanna be like Him, and I wanna know Him." And it was just, it was almost electric, the feeling that I had as a child. And by the grace of God, I've not looked back one day, ever, in my entire life. And I'm blessed for that, to have been introduced to Jesus so early in my life. And that's why when I read the Orangutan Book, it was like, "Whoa, this is great. I get to find His life from beginning to end, and the fullness of His life, His courage, and His message to us all."
Steve, go ahead and advance the slide. So we discovered we had a similar story. I was about three years old when I fell in love with Jesus. And it's because my mother used to sing "Away in the Manger" to me because I couldn't sleep at night. And she got to the verse that says, "The cattle are lowing, the baby awakes, but little Lord Jesus, no crying He makes." And I had this thought, and this is about the spiritual journey. When you remember what you thought at three, when you remember what you thought at 16, at 20, when you remember what you prayed. I thought at three, Jesus was a baby like me. And I felt Him. And I believe that what I felt was His Spirit of truth, bearing witness with my spirit, even though I was probably pre-soul, I didn't have a soul yet. But there was truth in that thought. Jesus was a baby like me. And I felt His sparkling, beautiful, effervescent Spirit of truth come upon me. I felt the Spirit for the first time in my life. And it set me on a lifelong journey to find these other people that were like Him. My next encounter with Him was with Father Myers. And I've told Tom, he reminds me of Father Myers, my first minister. Gorgeous human being, full of light and beauty and truth and warmth and vibrant human being. And I thought to myself, "You're like..." And I thought to myself, "You're like Jesus, I know Him, you're a lot like Him." So that was my second encounter, as a small child, with Jesus. So, here's the slide. "Mortal man, mortal man cannot see the Spirit, Father; therefore have I come into the world to show the Father to your creature eyes. He who has seen me has seen the Father." The world needs to see Jesus living again on earth in the experience of spirit-born mortals, mortals, who effectively reveal the Father to all men. We can show each other Jesus. We get to do that. We, you know, it, it may be that the revelations that were meant to show us a visible, representation of the universe government on our world failed. Jesus did not. But the first who did, and they were very important, this book gives us back the fullness of Jesus's life. We know, just like when you read any great book, right? You envision, "And what a masterful story! What a masterpiece is this life and teachings of Jesus!" We can really say, "We see Him. We know Him. The world needs Him." So we become. What the world needs now is to see Him living again. I have a dear friend, you guys remember, Errol Strider. He used to love to provoke thought in people, still does. He said, "Wouldn't it be great if ten Jesuses showed up in Denver? And another twenty showed up in LA? And fifty showed up in New York? Wouldn't that be great?" Yeah, Errol, that would be awesome. We can show Jesus to each other. So, Tom, has anyone ever shown Jesus to you?
I had 60,000 people show me Jesus at one time. There was a group some years ago called the Promise Keepers. You may recall them. A Christian group that was basically supporting men and their sons, grandfathers, sons, grandsons. And in Seattle, several decades ago, there was a large gathering, huge gathering, at the Kingdome. It was this big dome stadium, and, like I said, it sat at least 60,000 people. And all these men had shown up, and a friend and I, or a college friend, we were, showed up late, as usual. We were doing something, and we, we came up upon this group that were in worship and praise. We could hear them from the outside, but we were yammering about something, our families or something. And I remember, like I said yesterday, the Kingdome had these long tunnels that approached the opening. And we're talking and just, you know, talking about old times. And we walked through the opening. They, so they're all in worship, arms out, singing a glorious song. And I walked through, and it was like walking through a wall. There was such glory when I walked through that space. I look around, and the men are crying, and the boys are crying, and, and I started weeping right away. And it was just this profound sense of God's presence in corporate worship, because they'd all come to share the love of God with their sons and with each other. The rest of the day was marvelous, but it, incredible. But it was this time when I was positive, irrefutable evidence of the presence of God in the, in the people that were there, and in this praise and worship.
That was an amazing feeling.
I'd do it every day if I could.
Seventy thousand men and their sons, keeping a promise to God.
Great glory.
Wow. I got to show God to somebody a couple times. But here's one that comes to mind. And to Andrea's point this morning, so well taken, that in our, in our adversity, sometimes the most beautiful treasures come up. Often, most times, let's say, most times, beautiful things come up. It's an opportunity to shine, to show God to somebody in your adversity. And I was 27 years old, and my husband was killed in a car accident. And I had a seven-year-old and a four-year-old to raise. And my whole community rallied around me. All, made one, two calls to Urantia Women, the community was there. It was marvelous. But, you know, people don't know quite how to deal with a tragedy like that, or quite what to say. Well, I had a friend in the neighborhood, and her daughter was friends with my daughter. Her name was Mitzi, dear, sweet soul. And she came over to talk to me and to comfort me. And I was sitting in a rocking chair in my living room. And she sat down by my side, and I could tell, on the floor, she was on the floor. I was in a chair, she was on the floor. And I could tell that this news troubled her deeply. She just couldn't wrap her head around it. She counted on her husband so much, and loved her family so much, and she just couldn't wrap her head around my grief. And so as she sat on the floor next to me, she said, "I can't even imagine what you're going through." And she started to weep. And she laid her head on my knee, just leaned up against me and laid her head on my knee. And I started stroking her hair. And pretty soon she looked up at me with just amazement. Now, I'd been reading the Urantia Book for eight years by now. And I was there in that space with God. God had me, but Mitzi didn't know that. She looked up at me in utter amazement and said, "Wow, you lost your husband, but you're comforting me." She couldn't figure that one out. I said, "I know, Mitzi." She laid her head back down, and I stroked her hair some more. She was astonished by that. But that's what we are capable of, because we have this incredible, beautiful Father in our lives, that we can't see. Not yet. But He's there, and we know it. Yep. Should we change the slide, Steve? Okay, so it's, it's not so important that you should know about the fact of God as that you should increasingly grow in the ability to feel the presence of God. Jesus said that. He went on to say, "When you once begin to find God in your soul presently, you will begin to discover Him in other men's souls, and eventually in all the creatures and creations of a mighty universe." What a wonderful thing, what a wonderful truth that is. So the question is, how can we grow in our ability to feel the presence of God and to be able to find God in everyone and everything?
Do His work. God needs a job. And His job is to work, what He wants us to employ you in ministry to others. My first job employment, after I was married, I was the director of University District Street Ministry in Seattle. I was to walk the streets, day and night, which terrified my wife, and minister to homeless people. And what ended up happening is, because at that time, there were a lot of homeless youth, just living in and about, in houses and in driveways with other people. It was, it was a horrible situation. So I started a program called Teen Feed. It was a program that fed youth. It's now seven nights a week, it was five nights a week in the basements of the churches. And we had a, I had 500 volunteers. I was responsible for coordinating and raising funds and all that, raising my own salary and all that. But these volunteers would come in, and they'd wonder, beyond just feeding them, what are we supposed to do? And my mantra was, "You meet them at their point of need, not your point of need." Your point of need might be, if you were, you know, an evangelical, well, you need to know Jesus. They walk in, and they want to introduce Jesus. Well, of course, those kids would say, "Forget it, I, I've already watched a TV show." But the, the success came with patience of just night after night of being with that young people and meeting them at their point of need. Now, did it make a huge difference in a whole lot of kids? I can't say. I know it made a difference in the volunteers. Certainly made a difference in me and our family and the people that supported us. But we were faithful to the task of not just feeding them, but praying for them. Every night we prayed, and then met them at their point of... It could have been they needed some clothes, or they needed, you know, some medical care. But at some point, they began to talk to these advocates, these people sitting at the table. "Why are you here? What are you doing?" And that's when that relationship came in, where they could really invoke the Spirit of God to teach them, or to share with them, what prompted them to come down to the university, to a basement of a church, and feed homeless kids. And it was, you know, it was a great experience. It did for seven years, for seven years of my marriage.
Well, I can tell you of one of your volunteers who was deeply, deeply touched by this ministry. And that's a man most of us know by the name of Tom Choquet. And he engaged in this ministry with you, and it had a profound effect on Tom. And he came to our community to speak of it over a weekend. And it was quite obvious how profoundly it touched him, to be able to help what, what was then known as throwaways. A lot of them were teenage throwaways. They really weren't welcome at home anymore. And their parents had just thrown up their hands, and life was much worse at home than it was on the street. What a tragic circumstance. And I remember asking Tom, when he gave us this talk, and he opened it up for questions, and I said, "Tom, Tom, what, what can we do? What can we do to help these kids not be on the street?" And he said something I'll never forget. He said, "Chances are, in your neighborhood, there's a mom down the street, and she has three kids, and she's in over her head, and she needs help. And maybe one of them is a teenage boy. Something that she's ill-equipped to deal with." He said, "If you get a chance, make friends with her and offer to help her before they go out on the street, to take some of the pressure off of her so that she can cope." And I just thought that was the best advice. And the other advice he gave about that was, and this is the fruits of your effort, right? Going out into the world.
Glory to God.
Yeah, all glory to God. He also said, "What, what can you do for that kid on the street that's asking you, or that, that person on the street that's asking you for a buck? Give it to them. And if you can't give it to them, just go up and shake their hand and say, 'I love you, thank you, I pray with you.'" Acknowledge them. So, that was very good.
I've got one more story, and this is pretty profound. A few years back, my wife's dad was ill, and he was separated from his wife, and so, living in Sweden, so we, I flew him over, and for a couple of weeks at the house, while he and his estranged wife would reconcile. The reconciliation didn't happen. He was demented by the time he came to the house. This was six years ago. And he was so demented that I never had a conversation with him in five and a half years, living at our house, full-time. And his, he was in such torment, he was a pastor back in Sweden. But he lived every day in torment, yelling, "Help, help me!" This was every day, all day, seven days a week, for five and a half years in my home. I'd retired, I had this all planned, I had it, my wife and I were gonna, you know, our travel tour, we're gonna see her. And the problem was, my father-in-law didn't like, he wanted us divorced, my wife and I, he and his wife, because of the Urantia Book, he was a fundamentalist pastor. So I bring this guy in, who was my, really, my most ardent detractor in life, and now he's living screaming for help all day, mostly at night, loud enough, I had to put earplugs in my ear, right? For years. And so what was the good news? Sounds pretty horrible. We had a whole host of caregivers come to the house, beautiful people. We had 57 different people come to our house over those five and a half years. And towards the end, as he was on decline, the caregivers, the women, became more beautiful. They were just lovely, lovely women, just tireless servants. And the day he passed, the moment he passed, I was there, we were gathered around him. And I'd, in the interim, in the last couple of years, like year or so, I'd really grown to love him. He's just a frail man laying in a bed in my house, and I'm having to care for him too, you know, get up in the middle of the night and change him and do all that stuff, and feed him. But his passing was so profound, I had this just overwhelming sense of love. It was one of the most beautiful experiences I've ever had. We were gathered around him. If you've been around somebody who's passed, you know how beautiful it can be. And I was just so aware that his soul was about to depart, and there were angels about, and I'm just singing God's praise. Here's a Son of God who was tormented, and now He's been released. And I'll see Him on the mansion, and we'll have some conversations, we'll, we'll sort things out, you know? But it was, it was just a profound experience to grow, to love someone who didn't love me, who wanted me, wanted my wife to divorce me. So, it's the healing power of God inside when we allow Him, His constant prayer, to love, just to love them, and put aside these differences, put aside these anger. Don't let them rule the, rule your life, whatever they are.
Yeah. What a gift, what a blessing. So what's a time check? How much time do we have? Time up? Are we up? Okay, well, we're gonna do a workshop, and the whole point of it is, you're mapping your spiritual journey so that you more clearly remember the great spiritual milestones of your own life, and the times that you broke through, and the times that somebody showed God to you, and the times that you showed God to somebody. So that's our workshop today, and we invite you to do that, and thank you, Tom, it's been a pleasure.
Glory to God. Praise God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank you, Tom, thank you, Paula. As they mentioned, they're doing their workshop right here. So if you like it and you want some more, stay here. Of course, there's other workshops listed in your program. So, let me just go over a few things for, till I get to talk to you again at dinnertime. So workshops are 3:15 to 5:15, starting soon. I know in some places it's gotten pretty cold, they seem to have adjusted it a little bit in here. Hopefully, some of the other rooms adjusted too. I heard a couple folks asking this morning, and I'm sure it's gonna happen even more this afternoon, "Hey, is there someplace we can get a coffee?", whatever. Take a break in your workshop if your leader lets you, or just sneak out the back. There is a café, it's called the Fillmore Café, it's at the end of the other side of the building. So, if you go past that big auditorium, opposite from where we are for our meals, there's a little café, you can get a cup of coffee, you can get a snack. So I recommend that for your break, or warm-up, or whatever you need, if so, from your workshop. And then we come back together, dinner's at 5:45, this is in your program, meditation at 5:30. Meditation at 5:30. There's also, if you look in your program, there's an event at 5:15 in the ballroom off the main, off the main ballroom, in the executive ballroom, where Sue Sekum is giving away free wine. So, show up, have a glass of wine on the fellowship, right? This is the Legacy Project, or she's going to talk a little bit about that. And if you know what I mean when I say that, you need to go because, you know, that means you're sort of savvy to what this might entail, and that means you're a person who should pay some attention to it. Anyway, go get a free glass of wine from Sue before dinner. It's the half hour before dinner is served, 5:15. And then, we will see you for dinner at 5:45. And keep the party going, as they say. Thank you very much.